Good evening, everyone. I apologize for the delay. I believe the time is now 7:12. This combined, this is a combined school committee meeting. It was posted for this evening, Wednesday, October 25th. And it was posted for the Northborough School Committee, Southborough School Committee, Northborough, Southborough Regional School Committee, and the Northborough-Southborough Superintendency Union Number Three. These are all individual committees with their own chair, and they act independently. It's been the tradition when it comes to the combined meetings that we alternate between the Chair of the Union and the Chair of the Northborough-Southborough Regional School Committee. And we do this for two reasons. The two groups can be recognized and chaired, but also because it rotates the towns so that when we have combined meetings, we try to do it. So it's one meeting will be Northborough, the next will be Southborough. This would be Northborough's turn. Unfortunately, the Chair of the Superintendency Union is not available and is not able to be here this evening, so that is why I'm chairing. My name is Patricia Kress. I'm Chair of the Northborough School Committee. And at this time, although we do not have quorums of the Superintendency Union, and we do not have a quorum of the Northborough-Southborough Regional School Committee, we do, however, have quorums of the Northborough School Committee and of the Southborough School Committee. So on behalf of the Northborough School Committee, I will call this into session. And I'll turn it over to the Chair of the Southborough School Committee.
And I'm calling the Southborough School Committee into session.
And as we do not have a quorum for the Regional School Committee, we would like to invite members that are present on the two school committees, Northborough and Southborough, that are now in session, to share with us your feelings on whether we should proceed this evening.
I think we should proceed.
Okay, thank you.
You too.
Okay. So are there anyone, does anyone object to us proceeding?
I'm not session.
Okay. And your feeling...
Are there any votes planned for this evening that we know of? Nothing, I know of, okay.
There were no...
And we shouldn't have any votes this evening. We don't think so.
Right. So we will, is it okay with you Superintendent Johnson?
The will of the committee.
All right. So hearing no objections, and I think it's been agreed that we will proceed, and we will start the agenda with the first item, which is discussion on the 2018-2019 school calendar. And I believe we shall open it up to audience sharing as though it's not on the agenda.
It actually is, Madam Chair, on the revised.
Thank you.
And what I did learn, which was quite informative, you know, we have two town managers, and we post in both districts. And we were advised by one of the town managers that even if we had not reposted purposely with an audience sharing, it is always up to the Chair to entertain whether they do or do not want to have audience sharing. So regardless, we could proceed if that was the will of the Chair, which is interesting information and new.
All right, then I will invite... Oh, I'm sorry.
If I could kick off audience sharing. I just want to say, I have to leave in about 15 or 20 minutes. My daughter's got a concert on the other side of the building, so, and then I'll be coming back. So I just wanted people to be aware of why I'll be leaving.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. And then I would like to continue with, give the audience the opportunity to share. Please keep in mind...
It may be worth noting, because we do have Regional School Committee members here, that the discussion piece is an important part not to have because the Regional Committee's members are seated at the table. And that could then potentially bring about some concerns because there is no quorum for the Regional Committee. And so I know that in the past, we've certainly gone to, I want to say, to an extra level of concern around the discussion piece because then that would negate perhaps the meeting process of a combined meeting.
So you're suggesting that Regional members who are in attendance tonight not discuss, and order to not violate any open meeting laws since they are not in session?
So I have a question about that. If there's not a quorum, why would there be an open meeting law violation?
That is a good question.
Well, I do know that this became an issue at one of our meetings last year, and so...
Was it a well-founded issue, or did anyone actually bring that point up?
No one raised the issue, but when we reviewed it, it was enough for council to have been concerned about it. And it's one of the great areas. So I'm just bringing that up to the committee just to review.
See, the problem, I'm thinking the problem on open meeting would be that, is that other members of the committee could watch the tape and therefore see what the positions were of the members of the committee that were present. I think that might be what the concern would be.
Well...
That's the only thing that I'm thinking. It's because...
That would suggest that any televised meeting, any televised public meeting...
Without quorum.
Well...
That's what the issue is. The issue is that there's a number of people here, but it isn't quorum.
Right.
We begin a conversation with the two seated committees, and a member of the Regional Committee is engaged in the process and is seated at the table. It could be somewhat gray.
But didn't, wasn't this discussed at the last combined meeting? That was also without quorum, so we're continuing the discussion. So some people of the committee, other committees that weren't at the other one have already seen the tape from last September, from last month's meeting. So we've already had that happen.
That's true.
I'm just bringing it for a conversation. If there's no concern, there's no concern. I thought we'd bring it forward.
I think Jerry's right, because I know open meeting law, you can't like send an email to one member, and then send an email to another member, and then a third member. So I think if we had a discussion that included Regional members, other members saw it on the tape, that seems to me a very similar scenario.
Okay.
Right. That is the concern. Is, the thing is, all it would take is one person to just write a violation, write up a violation, and that's it. So...
So I think those concerns are valid enough that I would respectfully ask any members of the region who are present this evening not to engage in discussion for their own benefit. I'm not a Regional member, so I'm not going to get, I wouldn't be in violation of that. I'm here with Northborough School Committee, and we are in open session. I'm able to, and I won't. So now you know why I won't be.
But I can't speak as part of the audience. We have audience sharing.
Sure. You can recreate yourself.
But they're still seeing me speak on TV.
It's a different gray area, though.
Right.
Yeah, I fail to see the distinction in reality. And just to...
It's true.
Yeah, if you want. Because for all practical purposes, if we get, if we on the committees that have quorums and are in session get no feedback, even from individuals, on the other, on members of other committees that simply have opinions but don't have a quorum, there's, a lot of the value of this meeting is significantly diminished.
Well, I'd like to...
And I realize there's no, there were no objections to holding the meeting, but...
Right. Well, also keep in mind that Northborough and Southborough independently vote on the school calendar.
Right.
So we don't need, it makes sense for us to have the same calendar because of the cost expense in regards to busing and just keeping the days the same, just for professional development days and for a number of other issues. It definitely makes sense to keep the calendar, the same calendar for all three districts. But we are separate committees, and we can vote on the calendar independent of each other.
Well, that begs the issue of why, why wouldn't we simply then just all discuss the calendar in our own little individual meetings, our own individual meetings, not necessarily little, instead of in a combined meeting where we don't really get any feedback from the, especially the region, right? Where, you know, if we're going to, if having a consistent calendar is beneficial, and I personally do think it is, we're, you know, we're...
Well, then that's...
The balloon isn't very full.
Well, God, you think having a consistent calendar is very beneficial?
No, but we, but we can't get, but, all right, but we can't get feedback from everyone. So I'm just really responding to your comment that it says, well, but we are individual committees, so we can certainly make up our own minds. But I'm not sure any of us really want to do that in a vacuum that doesn't include everyone.
Fair enough. So you're suggesting we proceed?
Yeah, I just want to mention, too, that another reason for proceeding, at least through part of this discussion, might be because we have an audience here who I think have taken time out of their schedule to come share their thoughts. So at least we should do enough of the meeting to make that worthwhile, and then whatever else makes sense. But I think at a minimum, we should do that.
Thank you.
And just to state, too, that the calendar usually is on the monthly school committee agenda anyways. And I believe it was on last month. It'll be on next month, okay? So anybody in Southborough that has anything they want to come in and have any concerns at all can come into that meeting, too, and express your concerns.
Thank you. Great, so shall we proceed with audience sharing? I just ask that people, when you share, just keep in mind that this is for audience sharing. This is not a public hearing. We will not be engaging, but we are very glad that you're here and that you're willing to share. And I just ask also that you give your name and the town that you're from.
Good evening. Thank you for holding the meeting. I know that this is an ongoing battle. It's taken a lot of time from a lot of people over many years. I've been here many times. We've been in Northborough, oh, sorry, Adam Winter. You'll recognize the last name, from Northborough. We've been in Northborough for 28 years. The fact, and I am Jewish, the fact that Northborough observes the Jewish holidays has always been important to us. It means that we can have the kids come to services with us, and they don't feel like they're missing out anything in school. I understand that there are supposed to be guidelines that no tests are given, but as a parent, we've seen enough times when we come back from services and the kids say, well, they have to start their homework because they do have something to do the next day, or there is a test that follows it. So a stated policy, and what actually happens, my personal opinion, is that it doesn't always line up. It may have been fixed. Again, my kids are long gone from the school system. But I have seen our friends' children as well, not in Northborough or Southborough, but it's the school system that never had, well, they haven't had off the Jewish holidays in probably 30 years. And I've seen the kids stressed over, do they follow their religious belief or go to school? And these were, you know, A-students, and they opted to go to school because they were afraid of not doing their best because they took a day off to, you know, go to a religious service. Something that's important, too, is, interestingly enough, the United States is the only country in the world that associates with Judeo-Christian values. And our society is based on Judeo-Christian values. The reason that we have even the Christian holidays when they are is because of our beliefs. And I think it's important that we do keep the Jewish holidays in the calendar. Now, it may sound like a lot of days, but I think that when we looked at a number of years, year after year, you're talking about either New Years or Day of Atonement, not usually both in the same year. And then I think as tact with that is also Good Friday. So it's a minimum of two days that we're talking about, and it's been a maximum of three days in some years. And that's if we just keep things as they are, is that's my understanding. So just as someone that's, you know, I think that there's enough, there are enough people in the world who don't even understand what these holidays are. And I know the teachers try their best to explain what they are. But even in Worcester, when I got my masters, they had an exam on Yom Kippur, which is Day of Atonement, which is the most solemn day of the year. And the professor didn't even know what the day was. So this, we still have this problem that people are not aware of what, you know, the Jewish holidays are, which are the foundation of, you know, most of Christianity. So my two cents, I hope it helps. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Lori Chastanay, and I have to leave early because my daughter is in a concert. She's a freshman this year. And she wanted to be here because we went through this year with high school. I'm actually in Northborough, so first year here at school. And every year she's missed because it's elementary or middle school. This year she happened to have a test on the second day of Rosh Hashanah. We celebrate both holidays, but she had a pull on this. And I'm really just fighting for the one day and for Yom Kippur. In many years, as Adam has said, that we have had this off for many years. Why are we moving backwards in this world? We have to move forward and think of things in a forward way. We have many religions within our community, and I respect everyone's religion. But in the Jewish religion, this is the only religion that you cannot work on the holiday, that you're supposed to abstain from working or studying or reading, and really be in prayer or celebration. So that, to me, is my main point, and I think that should really be looked upon. Again, the student pool is tough. She doesn't know what to do. She respects her religion, she was Bat Mitzvah, she's now tutoring and helping out within the synagogue, and she fills this pool, and that should not be on our students. So thank you, and I really hope you take this into consideration.
Thank you. We appreciate you sharing that with us.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the committees. My name is Mitch Cohen. I'm new in town. We moved to Northborough about 13 months ago from the town of Douglas, Massachusetts. And I'll continue on with a little bit of an introduction, which will guide into some of the points I'd like to make. I was very, very active in Douglas government. I sat on the school committee for many years. Matter of fact, I served as Chair of a Superintendent Search Committee while Bob Melikin, the former superintendent here, was the interim administrator. I got to know Bob extremely well, and it was, it was both sad and heartening to see his portrait as I walked across the building earlier this evening. You may ask, well, why on earth, if myself and my whole family, we've got two little girls who are at Z School, why would we uproot ourselves from a town that we obviously really cared about? It was for schools. And one of the real issues that my kids, at their young age, ran into was the town that we lived in had essentially zero Jewish population, had never had the days off. It was a huge, huge problem for them to miss school every year at the very beginning of the school year. As a speaker before said, these are really serious holidays. I watched the video of your most recent meeting, of this discussion from last month, and it was referred to as, as holiday celebrations. Rosh Hashanah, and especially Yom Kippur, are not celebrations. They are extremely solemn holidays where the religious instruction is, go to synagogue. Once you're 13, you have a Bar of Bat Mitzvah, you don't eat on Yom Kippur. Kids like that can't go to school. And it's completely inappropriate to take that away from families that many times, including my own family, have moved here after looking at the school calendar. That was one of the things we did before looking at houses in this town. For example, we didn't look at houses in a neighboring town that didn't have those holidays off. There are a number of families, a lot of families around, who are in that predicament. Taking those away is really, really serious. I won't claim to know the pros and cons about Good Friday. I'm not an expert in Judaism. I'm certainly not an expert in Christianity. So I don't know what the religious mandates are, whether people should, must go to services or participate in some other religious aspect during the school day on Good Friday. And I also don't know what those instructions and mandates are for other religions and other holidays. I know enough about Judaism to know that it's a problem. And the Jewish holidays that we're talking about are at the very beginning of the school year. And my kids lost really, really important lessons at the school year. And they're just elementary school now, as I said. They're going to be going up through the system, and they'll be in this building before I know it. And we just don't want to have that happen. That's not a good precedent to set. I won't, as I said, I won't claim to know the impact on other religions. The conversation that should be had, if there are other religious people in these two towns that are equally affected by this, the conversation should not be about taking things away. They should be about accommodation in some way, shape, or form. As, again, an earlier speaker said, accommodations right now don't work. And taking away more days at the beginning of the school year, causing even more trouble, that makes it even harder. So I really think the joint committees here really need to give serious thought to this and really just put this off. And I can't even see how this would come up in the towns of Northborough and Southborough, which are really great towns. They're having a great time here. I'm more than, I know this isn't conversation, but I'm more than happy to take any questions anytime, either during the meeting or afterwards. I've spoken to a couple of the people at this table about this previously, and I'm very, very happy to discuss this at any time. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. Hi, thanks. Karen Clark. I have never been to a school committee meeting, so thank you for having us and listening. I am Jewish. I live in Southborough. My children are young, kindergarten and second grade. I, it's important to me to keep the, especially the Jewish holidays, but I guess in fairness, whatever holidays we're thinking about, keeping them off. For us, at least, what I'm familiar with is Judaism. And to me, it's a day that, as many people have said already, is a solemn day where we spend the day at temple. We go to the synagogue, we pray. We don't work, and we don't write. And it's very, it's a very different day than a school day. So to us, it's very important that the children don't go to school that day. So if the calendar did change, no matter what, my children at least, and maybe other Jewish children, are still not going to go to school that day. And to me, my kids, even as young as they are, it's important to them when they see their report card, seeing the number of absences is an important thing to them. And unfortunately, if they have to see that they've missed days of school because of their religion, because of the Jewish holidays, that, that's just a, you know, that doesn't make them, obviously, feel very good. So I think in fairness to, I don't know what the other argument is, and I guess I need to educate myself around the other side and hear that out. But from my standpoint, it's important to me that my kids don't have to miss school because they would if the calendar did change. So that's the first point. Secondly, I think when new families are looking into the town and they see the calendar, and they see these days are given off, I think that's a huge benefit to a lot of other Jewish people, maybe other people where the days are still off for those holidays. I think at this point, it shows a very supportive community to different, different groups. And I think that's a huge piece to, whether it's considered marketing or at least supportive of other groups, other communities. And this is a very supportive, inclusive community, and I think that just, that just proves, it continues to be. As someone mentioned, moving in here, that's a big piece that there, that some people are looking at when they're moving to another town. Let's see, was there any other notes? I think those were, those were my biggest, the biggest pieces. So, oh, the other thing I wanted to mention is, for other, I guess, I would want to do more research into other religious, you know, if there's an argument around other religions that are looking to get other days off, and that becomes an issue, the question becomes, do they, do they need, does everyone need the full day off? In Judaism, we need the full day off to, to not work, and to pray, and to go to temple, and not necessarily celebrate. So we're actually making use of that day. So I guess that's, that's all I had to say. Thanks so much for, for listening.
Thank you for coming and sharing.
Hi, Catherine Rose. I'm in Southborough, and I'm not Jewish, but I have family members who are. And I am in support of keeping the Jewish holidays, particularly for the reasons that a lot of the other folks have mentioned, that it, in many religions, I know I'm Catholic, it's not a requirement that you stay out of school or work to, to really practice your religion. So I think it's really important for us to be tolerant of the religions and respect their position in this matter. And also with the other religions, there are always major holidays, minor holidays. Perhaps we can really be thoughtful about the discussion and get input from all the religions and figure out which one of their holidays, or I hate to use the word holidays, actually, because it sort of invokes a celebration of some kind of someone else mentioned. These are solemn days, and there, I know there are other religions that perhaps have the same situation. So if we can just be tolerant of them, we don't, they don't, maybe not need the whole day off. But perhaps the faculty can be informed, and the school calendar, the teaching calendar can reflect these different days so the teachers understand that they shouldn't give tests, or they shouldn't give extra homework, or things like that on those days. So I'm in support of keeping the Jewish holidays. I'm also in support of really just trying to have tolerance in the schools and really respecting the religious practice of everyone in the school system. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Deb Demond Swartz, and I live in Northborough. I have two little girls. They're fourth grade and kindergarten. I'm also, I'm a school social worker in an elementary school in a different town, and that school does not have the Jewish holidays observed. I'm speaking mostly about the Jewish holidays because the proposal, it sounded like was removing those holidays. I can say, as being a school employee, I'm all about summer. And certainly by June, you know, it's really hot in the buildings, and it's really time to end for the year, and I think everybody's kind of ready. However, I really have to say that this, I really urge everybody to view this as being so much more about, about so much more than just starting summer a little earlier, having these days. Like, you know, like Catherine was saying, that this is really about tolerance and respect. I think that having these holidays off, when we were looking, I know as other people have said, and I'm trying not to repeat too much, but just sort of underscore what I see as like the major points, that when you're looking for a town to live in and raise your family, you want a town that, that is progressive and has, has that tolerance and shows that awareness and that respect. And I think that, you know, that was something that my husband and I both said, wow, you know, okay, this is, you know, Northborough, Southborough has it, and, you know, we're going to be welcomed here, we're going to feel like we belong. And I think that, you know, to propose removing these days is really going backwards. And so, given the current political climate, you know, with rise of hate crimes and antisemitism, you know, on the march in American cities, a lot of, there's been a discussion on the Northborough Moms website, the Facebook page specifically, as well as other, you know, Facebook and social media, and just in terms of people talking to their friends. Whoa, what is going on, and what can I do? And how can, how can, what can we do to, to help, you know, and teach our kids, you know? And I know somebody specifically said, what is Northborough doing about, about this in the schools? And I think that that's really something that, you know, just having these days off is teaching awareness and teaching, you know, modeling empathy and respect and acceptance. So, you know, we're building a sense of community. And so I really, I feel like I know, you know, I know life is busy, and I know that for, for parents, having to find childcare because they have to go to work on a day, you know, that even though it's a Jewish holiday and they're not, they don't observe it, they still have to find childcare. And, you know, that they say, oh, you know, that's a burden, and, you know. But I, I just want everyone to kind of take a step back, and I really do urge everyone to see this as, as a community endeavor, and that, you know, that it's sending a really important message of tolerance and respect.
Thank you.
Hi, Beth Syatt. I'm a resident of Southborough. I have two boys in the elementary schools, kindergarten and third grade. So I'm in favor of keeping the schedule as it is so that we do observe the Jewish holidays. Because as a Jewish family, my children would miss school because they do, we do belong to the temple, we observe the holidays, we go to temple, we pray, we celebrate with our, well, I guess we're not, we're observing with our family, and then, and so forth. And so, growing up in Westborough at a time when the calendar was different, when we didn't observe the holidays in school, I was really stressed as someone who was very studious and wanted to make sure that I... and wanted to make sure that I was doing my assignments on time and not missing anything. I was really stressed when I had to stay home on those days. And when we were looking to move to Southborough from Brookline, I was really happy to see that the calendar here was, you know, we did have the days off and they were observed. Even at work, the organization where I work, we do, you know, for just a few of us who celebrate, meetings are changed and rescheduled just to accommodate those of us who observe so that we don't feel like we're missing out or we can't participate. So I just, I'm really in favor of keeping this inclusive mindset where everyone feels like a member of the community, as many of us have relayed here. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'd like to thank everyone for having this open forum. My name is Michael Bernsweig, and my wife and I have two daughters in the elementary school here at Peaslee, in second and fourth grade. We both grew up in the local area, and to be honest, when my wife mentioned to me that this meeting was even taking place, I was really, really taken aback. I remember as a young student, you know, being very serious about my studies, as my daughters are, and never had the stress or concern of having to worry about not attending school on the two religious holidays, which are, I'm not going to restate, but, you know, two of the most important holidays in the Jewish calendar. We have our business here in Southborough with my brother and our family and raise our daughters here and really just want to stress that it's absolutely a very, very, you know, serious and important component of our lives and our families. And I know that the community has been overly gracious and, you know, as a local family member, it's really one of the big reasons that we decided to move to Northborough was the tolerance of the community and the inclusion of all religions. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. Lynn Winter, if you don't know. I just wanted to say that one of the things that I think is important is that it's really, we talk about all the different religious holidays that there are, and, you know, you look at the calendar and there's practically a holiday every day. But the fact of the matter is, most of those holidays are not, they're not as important. They're not holidays that require people to refrain from work, as has been said before, refrain from eating, refrain from, and really being introspective and yom kippur pretty much the whole day, convenient services, rosh hashanah, there's things that go on in the afternoon, the morning afternoon. And it really is holidays that require you, that you, in order to observe it, you cannot be in school, you cannot be in work. Actually, this year, for the very first time, I, being not Jewish, I never fasted on yom kippur, but this year I did. And I got to tell you, I had a headache from like 10 o'clock on and didn't eat until 7 o'clock in the evening. So this fast is much more than any fast I ever did on Fridays or the hour before communion, which masses an hour, so you pretty much could eat right up there as things have changed. So I can't imagine having to be in school. Say, imagine that a child is afraid of, doesn't want to miss school, but they want to observe it in some way. They go to school and they decide they're going to fast. I can't imagine being in school with that headache that I had. And everyone in our household had a headache because of, you can't even drink water. And I never knew all of this. So, I mean, this is, this is why it's important. It's not that the school district is celebrating the holiday with us, it's merely allowing the Jewish people to observe their holiday without any reservations.
Thank you. Anyone else from the audience? Well, there won't be a vote this evening, but I will open it up to the members that are here and in session to share if they'd like to.
Well, I guess I'll start. First, I want to thank everybody for coming. This is maybe the biggest attendance we've had for, in the last few years, but five or six years ago was very big, too. And the issues still haven't changed. And my position on the issue really hasn't changed either, and that's that I think these holidays are very important. They've been on the calendar for at least three decades. And if the consideration of actually doing something to change that is actually taking something away from a group of people. This isn't somebody coming in and asking for something. This is the school committee making a decision to take something. So I just want you, everybody, just think about that perspective on it, because that's always been a big concern that I've had.
Thank you. I'd like to echo what you just said and thank everybody who came out this evening and had the courage to come out and to stand up and to speak. We really appreciate that, and we do hear you. And we thank you again for sharing. Any other discussion? Is there any other comments, concerns, or questions in regards to this agenda item before we move on? Well, Roger, go ahead.
Your school committee.
No, no. I'll follow you, Roger.
You were happy to see me, so I'll go ahead. So... I'm not Jewish. I do have a number of Jewish friends. I do know a little bit about the importance of Jewish holidays. I'm embarrassed to say I don't know very much at all about some of the other types of holidays that other religions celebrate. But just to follow on, and so I don't necessarily know that some of those other holidays may be any less serious or important. We haven't really talked about those, and no one, it doesn't appear there's anyone here tonight that, you know, is potentially advocating that. Whether or not that means they aren't as important and they, there's just no one here to advocate that, I'm not sure. But hypothetically, if there were, would it be any less important to be strongly considering adding that to the calendar as a holiday when compared to the issue that Jerry mentions, taking something away? In other words, is taking something away a lot worse than not necessarily adding something? I mean, I, look, I heard the comments about people moved to the town because circumstances were as they are from a school calendar standpoint, so I can probably, you know, offer an argument to my own question there. But if, as we evaluate this, are we doing the complete job to stop here and not try to examine some of the other religions' holidays and understand how important they may be, how serious they may be? Just sharing. So this is a sharing meeting and not a...
I actually had a similar thought just from, I just am not informed of whether or not we've had other requests for days off in the calendar from other faith groups. Is, have we had requests or?
We've had communications to central office twice in my seven-year awareness of, to date, whether or not there have been recent communications. And one was from the Hindu faith, just reminding us that they also have holidays, but not being overly specific about what or when those fall. And I think that I had one inquiry from the Muslim faith as well. And so, but again, not specific to any one day.
Just the general?
Just a general, you know, communication that we have days of celebration as observants. And I thank you for that, Mr. Pone, because I know it could have been me who actually said holiday of celebration at the same point, and I think it's a great clarification for us to be aware of what we should be properly referring to these days as. So I thank you for that. And so, there was no specific date for that faith's purposeful observance at that point, just a communication in general.
And were those communications from people within district?
One was from Utah, I believe, and I think it was a general sort of, you know, spread, blast out to all the school districts. And the other one was really sort of an interfaith council or a faith council, not specific to, specific to the Muslim faith, but not from this community.
Okay, so we've had none from our community?
Not at this point, no.
And I just have a follow-up question. And what, this is my first year here, so I'm trying to, I'm trying to catch up. What was the impetus behind considering this? Was it to shorten the school year? Is that what?
So I think, and I think Jerry raised an excellent point. In order to change, you really need to consider whether, why, and if there is a compelling reason to do so.
Yeah, exactly.
And I think the reason for a lot of the data that we were seeking was to identify whether there was a compelling movement one way or the other, or response one way or the other, whatever benchmark you use is, you know, a number equivalent of defining equivalent, compelling, 75% response in favor one way or the other. But that has been a part of our conversation whenever the calendar has come up, and this is a yearly event. It's not something that is unique to this year. Every year, the committee has to take up for consideration whatever the next year's calendar will be. Three years, yeah, last year, we were a little ambitious. I presented a three-year progression for conversation, mostly for discussion, because ultimately, these conversations have come up more than once. Historically, I can give you a perspective, I was in the district 30 years ago when in 1996, the Jewish holidays were added to the calendar. And for all of the reasons that were mentioned this evening from audience members, that was really the impetus for those being moved forward. And to the comment about being off-cycle with calendars, two of the years since 1996, we were off-cycle. And it did not make for an easy time for educators, but more importantly, for our students who had settings at maybe high school and middle school in another district, or for parents who had now different schedules with their children. And I think because of that, we come together and try to center around one calendar. And so, that's a great question. Is it, as it's been mentioned, to end earlier? I think we had that conversation at the table, and I don't think that that was the purposeful discussion around why we were considering this again. It wasn't to end earlier. We live in New England, we can set any mark we want. We're averaging four snow days a school year. That's our 10-year average at this point, doing some historical data. And so, we agree that that wasn't the conversation, that the intent of the conversation this year was to determine whether or not we were being respectful of all students, regardless of their faith. And a lot of information shared this evening to follow up with what Roger had suggested, you know, do we know what that would mean if there was a compelling argument put forth to celebrate, to recognize?
Observe.
Observe, thank you, to observe another faith. And so, we have a lot of information, and that's something we can research. I think it's been brought up several times. Is there, is there a particular other faith that does in fact have that same religious experience? So that's good work to do so that we know these answers. But again, as pointed out, none has come forward. So is it then to talk about how we can, as a district, better appreciate the diversity that is ever increasing in our district, whether it's religious faith, whether it's cultural, I mean, there, it's an exciting time for us. We have our ELL presentation usually in December, a great time to celebrate the changes that are happening in our district. And so, is it that? And I think that's the center of our conversation. What is the purpose for change, and is it compelling based on the data to do that?
I'd like to also add that parents in the community have expressed to me, certainly none here this evening, but in the past, parents have expressed to me their concerns with the start and the start of the school, of the school year. And if you look at where the Jewish holy days fall next year, it's weeks that follow each other. So you'll have the first, you won't have a full week of school until the very end of September due to the Labor Day, and then one, and one week a Jewish holy day, and then the following week a Jewish holy day. And parents and educators have expressed concerns to me in the past that there have been so many starts and stops, and they go to school and then they don't have a full week until the very end, until, you know, almost a month in. I believe it will be just about a month in, if you look at the proposed calendar next year. So I just wanted to mention that that has been addressed to me as a school committee member, parents have mentioned it to me. I don't know if other members have experienced that or have heard concerns from community members similar? Just myself.
Now, I would say that the, that people always have issues about the calendar.
Exactly. I agree. I completely agree.
To try to isolate it to one thing, I mean, it's, you know, you could talk to 10 people and get 10 different comments back on where their concern is, so.
Good point. Thank you, Jerry. You're exactly right.
I also have a follow-on question, which is, have we discussed in the past when it comes to this? Because I think the point about being sort of fair to all faiths is an important point. And I don't know if we've ever gotten any input from, like, the legal side of things, you know, I mean, separation of church and state type thing and how that might be implicated here, especially where the community is getting more and more diverse and you have, and I just, I just don't know. So I just wonder as a data point if that would be something that would be useful.
Go ahead. I know, I know this has been something that we have deferred, we have gotten responses from council on.
Okay. So in one of the piles, there is some, as close to legal language as we can get from the Department of Education, which provides some guidance. And it basically is 180, 990 at the high school, 180 with 900. It's not either-or. This was a big issue when we had significant snowfall the other day, the other couple of years ago, particularly in the Boston area. A lot of schools were making a plea for waivers, and the governor was very firm on that. And it's, you know, it has to meet both thresholds. Within that, it is the purview of the school committee to set the calendar, as long as we fulfill the 180 with the required number of hours.
Okay.
And that was last year when we did the research. I haven't seen a flurry of activity on the superintendent's listserv, so I would probably suggest it's the same. And I will say that this is something that... And I will say that this is something that frequently comes across the superintendent's listserv, you know, what are you doing about? And so, it is a very personal discussion for everyone, and it is not unique to our community. And that conversation takes place in communities that have the days and do not have them already in their calendars. So, we are in good company with other school communities continuing to have this dialogue, and again, is virtually every year.
I want to follow up on the diversity topic, and the potential importance of observance, observing certain, certain important days in other faiths. I think that the fact that we can say we haven't heard requests, that may not be the end of that story. If we're, because again, that's not a situation where the issue is potentially taking something away. I mean, I think if we're serious about trying to understand that area, we should potentially reach out, I think, and reach out and ask. Because sometimes you can get a response to a reach out more than you can get somebody to simply kind of create the question in the first place. Nothing wrong with making it a little easier to find out some things, so.
I believe we have.
I will say that, following up with our conversation, it was suggested that we reach out to the interfaith council, and I was provided names and did send an invitation. I think I copied the school committee chairs, and invited them to attend this session, this meeting. And if they were not able to, certainly give my office a call, contact one of the school committee chairs. So, I have not been directly contacted. Based on that email, it was sent out at the beginning of October. I made sure before coming that it wasn't in my junk box. It's not. It definitely was sent, so anyone who has that experience checks the box many times over. And so, it was sent out, and I did not receive any calls directly. I'm not sure if the chairs have of the three committees, but we did make an attempt to reach out, and one time trying is not one and done, so, you know, the conversation would continue. But I do think that this was all, I would say, fairly well-publicized. And so, it was sent out. It's been on the website that it was a special meeting, and it was communicated to, in district, the one constant contact communication. It's on every combined meeting agenda, and certainly, we spent a lot of time chatting about it. So, one can never communicate enough, but was it sent and was it communicated out? It was. So, if that's any indication, and that doesn't mean that we shouldn't continue to engage all of our stakeholders.
But we took a step.
We took a step, or a few.
And was this topic part of any of the calendar surveys? Because I did one as a parent, and it was more about professional development days and the data set?
Actually, it was, yes, it was very much part of the two larger surveys that we sent out, the one that was embedded in the communication survey that we briefly reviewed in May, and then decided that we would wait for the follow-up of the survey results that we did in the fall, which we have. The reason that specific professional development survey went out and was posted on the website is because what was really interesting, we certainly had a significant number of responses to the questions that we purposely asked. But what was also equally as important and informative for me, as superintendent, was to review the one hundred and two responses that we received. And we gave, you know, just sort of a free write, and we did so in both surveys in a different way. One was in, another, if you had other comments to share, and I think it was comments. And the other survey was, you had two choices, you had a third choice, which was other, meaning if you didn't choose one or two, you needed to provide something. And so, we received a lot of feedback, and it was, it was interesting. Categorically, nothing rose to a level of, say, that compelling number of fifty percent or even thirty percent as a singular comment, so it was combinations of things. Well, we would like this if this happened, and if this would happen, then we want this. So, it was, you know, a little difficult to sort of unravel, but there were two other topics that came up that, you know, Greg and I have chatted a lot about, and would, regardless of what we do this evening, or in December, or whatever decisions are formed, I would suggest that we take a significant look at those other consistent threads that were not about the religious observances. They were more about the February vacation, and the March vacation, and the April vacation, without a significant number weighing in on one or the other. And it was in combination. Well, you know, if we, if we, if this happens, then we'd like a March vacation. If this doesn't happen, then we'd like, so, somebody said there's no shortage of input on the school calendar, or on snow days, I will add that one. And that was true, and that really came through. But things like professional development, PD days. Our teachers are actively involved in improving their craft, expanding their knowledge, continuing to grow as educators, so that they can bring that back to the classroom. But, you know, in terms of the combinations and the conversations about time, placement of those, and what can we do around those, might mitigate any other decisions that we make regarding the religious observance issue. So, that might, you know, be impactful. And the end of the school, even though I don't believe we're taking this up to this depth and extent because of the calendar for its days counted, but rather, we decided it was that equity discussion which is important to have. If that were a concern, and that was influencing a people's response, I think that it's worth looking at doing something other than we've done for thirty-five years with our PD days, which could be very invigorating and exciting for our staff. So, other, you know, conversations here bring about innovative thinking in other areas, and change of practice that might be compelling.
Thank you. Paul, since you're back?
Can I just follow up on that? So, if you're going to do something with PD days, you're talking about moving them outside to school year, either before or after?
Potentially, and we're just brains, we've been doing, we have headaches, brainstorm. There, one of the conversations, and I think one of the challenges around the calendar, the traditional calendar and how it flows, is that in those years where there may be three as opposed to two observances, it's magnified by the fact that Columbus Day is also in October. So, we're looking at the month of September, and we're looking really at the two weeks in October, because it does seem, and it is true, that we do not have a full week session. But it doesn't necessarily mean that that should negate whatever we decide around religious observances. So, I think we can separate that conversation. And so, there are things like Canvas, which we didn't have before. We talked about that, that learning management system, that can offer professional development to our staff in a different way. You know, they're talking about, was it brown bag snow days, and that's a little bit more complex, but we certainly could pilot something like that with our professional staff, and that's a way to engage them more in the use of technology in the process. So, we can orchestrate a different type of PD, that sort of virtual learning, which is what we're encouraging our staff to do, like a flipped classroom environment. And the other thing that we can look at doing is embedding more of those PD days prior to the arrival of the students. So, that would mitigate some of that choppiness, because that's what it feels like, and choppiness in the flow of the, particularly the first six weeks of school. And I think that was addressed. So, if we can mitigate that, and it isn't about equity, then do we have a compelling reason? And I think that's what we should discuss further.
Thank you. Did you have a follow-up question to that, or you?
No, okay.
Any other discussion on this agenda item?
Are the calendar, not the calendar, the survey results available for review? Do we have to go to Central Office, or is there a copy?
No, I have stacks.
Okay.
Distribute. I think we were waiting for the audience, for the sharing piece to...
We have had our discussion as committee members, and there will be opportunity to view that information before, this, I assume, will be an agenda item for the next combined, and it will be...
With two committees having a quorum, I don't know if we want to distribute this tonight, or wait until all three committees are seated?
My thinking right off the bat is wait for all three to be seated.
I agree. I mean, that's something we're probably going to want to have a healthy discussion on.
Then, most likely, if that's December, and we'll want more conversation and analysis, taking some of the pressure off expectations around when we're going to vote, we may not be voting in December. I think we probably need to just put that out there, because parents call, and parents are looking for the calendar, and the expectation in past practices has been, for at least maybe the last five of seven, that we've voted in December. So, if, if we're thinking that's not, may not happen, it's good to sort of communicate that, so parents aren't expecting it prior to the holidays. Once we look at the data, it may be a more readily obvious direction that we want to take, or not. And so, maybe we still might, you know, it's really, but I think we should discuss the fact that it may not be a definite vote.
Can we agree that it will be an agenda item for combined in December, regardless of whether there is a vote or not? Okay. Then that, and then it's fair to say that we can save, school committee discussion can continue, I shouldn't say say, it can continue in December, knowing that it will be an agenda item, but not necessarily a vote.
And I will make sure, because it has not been distributed to the committee, it's not formally available, and it has not been shared at committee, so.
Is there any opposition to that?
No, I'd only ask a clarification, though. I think that we should say that it'll be discussed in December, and there will not be a vote in December. You know, not that there might not be.
It could go either way, though. You don't know until you get the quorum check.
I know, but the problem, the problem is that it's just one of knowledge of when the vote is going to be taken, that's all. In other words, if we're going into a meeting, it's an uncomfortable, it's not as comfortable to go into a meeting knowing, not knowing whether or not there's going to be a vote taken in that meeting.
Well, I know for Northborough policy on voting for the calendar, we don't technically have to do it till May, so I think people should just know under that assumption. It could be any time between June till May. You've got the whole year, every year. It's always that continual twelve-month cycle, and it's stated that way in the policy. So, it's kind of open-ended.
Oh, this is more of a procedural thing, just from the standpoint of the procedure of a meeting, that if, if we're going to say that, well, in December, we're going to discuss it, and we might not have a vote on it, I think the better thing to say, from procedure standpoint, is December, we'll discuss it, and we won't vote in December.
But who's to say if it's on the agenda as an agenda item, that a member won't move it forward for a vote?
That can happen anytime.
So, you're just saying no member can move for a vote if they don't want to, but they have that right to do so?
Any member can move for a vote, and the reverse can happen. You may have an item posted, you know, or have an item where you intend to vote, but there can be very good reason brought up at that meeting, such as we need to get some more information, or where you would not have the vote.
That's a good point.
That is, that is why I mentioned it being an agenda item, but not necessarily a vote for the...
Guarantee it.
Does it make any sense to discuss it at our individual meetings prior to December?
I think it should be on the calendar. Until, I think it should be, I'm thinking, every, every school committee meeting until such time as we vote on it.
So, with that said, it does provide each committee with a focused opportunity for a conversation. And generally, because we have had calendar discussions, or issues related to the calendar on individual school committee K eight meetings, agenda. If there will be a conversation at each of the three meetings, then it is conceivable there could be consensus when combined meets, I think on the eighteenth, in which case, the discussion about a may or may not vote is probably, it could be a possibility that people come to the table with some consensus in very short order.
And we're also just speaking for Northborough and Southborough right now, because Region's not in session, so they would have to make that decision on whether or not they want to have that at their meeting, since their chair is not here to determine their agendas.
Right, and, and as...
It's important to note that, I don't want to push this on the, on the regional school committee, as we're saying, we'll do it, but, because we're not technically all here.
And I'm sure that there'll be a conversation with the regional chair as to whether she wants to put that on the agenda. I will note that Northborough meets Monday.
Six-thirty, and that, has that already been posted?
We still have time to unpost and repost within the window, if we do it first thing tomorrow. So, if, that is the will of the chair, we can certainly do that.
Do Northborough members, would Northborough members like to have this included on this coming Monday's agenda for our November meeting? Or are you okay with it being on the December agenda, which would still give us time to discuss before the combined meets again?
That's a good question. I was just thinking, like, if Region's not in session right now, it's that whole kind of...
I agree.
I feel it's a combined issue. I don't feel like it should be really on our agenda, and our agenda on Monday is very packed with other things as well, that, I mean, we, it does seem like a combined issue, and that's why we always bring it to combined, so.
I agree.
I'm not necessarily leaning towards doing it separately in everybody's different committees, but again, it's each committee to themselves. For Northborough's, I mean, that's just my opinion, so I don't know what Keith's or...
So, and to add to that, we won't have any, I don't see, I don't foresee any new knowledge for us for this coming Monday.
Between now and then, yes.
And we can always, you know, discuss on Monday at our own meeting whether we're going to put it on our December meeting agenda.
Well, here's some good news. Southborough and Region both meet in November, and they both meet before we would meet in December, so.
That would be my recommendation to hold.
Even with December's agenda, it could be put on in December.
Right.
Monday's our November meeting?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
In October. Trick or treat.
In November.
Trick or treat meeting.
Couldn't find it.
So, there would still be time to put it on the December meeting prior to...
Yeah, but the only disadvantage is that, and it can be at either of the next two before the next combined meeting, but we don't have Joan or John here, so.
Again, the reason I think we had the separate meeting is because we knew it would be time-consuming, and I know that our agenda on Monday is probably going to be a lot to discuss, so, I mean, there's also that consideration as far as, and if we have another December meeting before this one, I think, as far as just juggling agendas, that would make more sense for us in Northborough. If Southborough, that's their, you know...
So, consensus will be that we, sorry, Keith, here.
No, I just think at either of the next two, that's my only request. Yeah, beyond that, it's fine.
Because I know, I know as chair of Northborough, Monday's is pretty much set, and calendar discussion is not an agenda item for us to be discussing in Northborough on Monday. And then, we'll focus on December later. Any other discussion from committee members on school calendar? Great, all right. Well, moving on, the audience is of course invited to remain. Our next agenda as school committee members is solar feasibility update.
Well, I keep hearing the Beatles, "Here Comes the Sun" in my head, and that's how we started the school year with our teachers, given that we had an eclipse, so that was a familiar song being sung about the community. I'm pleased to share with the combined committee that... I'm pleased to share with the combined committee that we did have a meeting with Ty and Bond, our chosen consultant, as we continue to explore solar feasibility. And it was a great meeting. Roger was present, and Patty was present, and Paul was present, so we were well represented by each school committee. I don't think I missed anyone.
Oh, Joan, but she...
Was representing the Region. And they presented their preliminary findings on the feasibility of each of our 10 schools. Again, the towns are sort of working with us, but working individually at their own rate, in terms of given the number of schools, buildings that they've identified, and their relationship with Ty and Bond at this point. And they presented anticipated returns on both canopy, which would be the car, the drive-under parking, solar carports, thank you, and the rooftop. One of the things that we were really pleased to hear when we asked the question, is whether or not RFPs can be written for roofs that are within not a reasonable period of time to consider solar mounts, which would be about 20 years' life, I think they said. And so, the answer is yes. So, the subcommittee, this working group, will be meeting Tuesday morning, I think at 7:15 is what we decided. We split the difference between 7:00 and 7:30. And at that meeting, we will review the presentation that Ty and Bond provided, and decide whether we want to continue pursuing the feasibility of this exciting initiative, and move to Phase Two. Phase Two would be a deeper dive into each of the schools. Maybe our discussions would also include, okay, do we want to choose the top five sites as they've indicated, and that could be, you know, Region, and it's up for conversation, because they did give the percent of return at each site. And whether we wanted them to continue either both the canopy and the rooftop mounts. So, they seemed great to work with, they came completely prepared, a lot of information to be shared, significantly large drafts of their very detailed analysis. And if we're ready to launch Phase Two, if that's the determination of the group, we'll be able to go and move out an RFP fairly quickly. Phase Two will include their partnership with us to write an appropriate RFP based on what we identify the needs to be at each of our sites. So, we know in a couple locations, we are talking about some significant roof repairs moving forward, within less than a 20-year frame, and so, particularly Finn and maybe Malekkan. And so, we would be able to consider that in the RFP as we put that out there. Might be lesser, less return, expected returns, but we'd also then be not having a huge capital expenditure for that roof repair. So, great conversation to continue, and it should move along pretty quickly once we decide to move into Phase Two. Still looking for the cost for Phase Two, which we did ask the consultants to provide to us pretty quickly. But again, I think they're waiting on what we want to do next. So, I think it'll be a great conversation for the rest of the year. I don't know if anyone who also attended...
I was going to invite Paul and then Roger to add, if you'd like to.
I would add one thing, they did seem to be steering us toward the lease option, which means there's no out-of-pocket expense, so, that was kind of nice.
Yeah.
Yes.
And maybe just to add a part of that, one of the reasons that people purchase is for the tax benefits. But as a school system, you don't get the benefit of the tax benefits, so the comparison between the lease option and the purchase option is skewed very much towards lease option, because you don't get the same return on your investment if you determine that you want to, you know, put capital into that, you know, direction, I guess.
And is it also like residential, where you get less? I mean, by leasing, they're getting a portion of what's being produced, right? I mean, that's, that's how they can, okay.
Well, when you say get less, though, maybe I don't understand, maybe, it sounds like you...
The actual benefit on the energy side, right? You get less benefits on the energy side, right? That's, that's where the free office...
Is that true?
It's got to be.
In general, but...
Money's got to come from somewhere.
But the fact that we're a municipality, we do not get the same types of tax benefits.
I understood that. I'm just curious if it's still a different...
You mean, as if the school district had, if the schools purchased the solar arrays ourselves?
Right, right. The energy benefits themselves.
The, I guess, landscape has changed a bit, and that's one of the, that's one of the things I learned, in that it used to be that the way to, you know, if you put solar panels on whatever you were going to put them on, your house or your business, the way you would sell excess energy back to the electric company, and get a credit, you know, that whole thing has changed.
That's right, yeah, they're worth less than they used to be.
Well, it's not really, I don't know that it's really worth less than it used to be, but basically, there's an, there's another approach that opens up, which is, some people do it just to sell it. In other words, I'm not, I'm not saying you can't sell it, you can, okay? Not just for credit, but you can actually sell it back to the, back to the energy companies. And some people do it just to sell it. They don't even use the, they don't even use the energy that they're creating from the solar panels for themselves. And I think businesses can do that, schools can do that, so there's, you know, there's more, more comprehensive, I guess, choices, and that sometimes means more complexity of, you know, of the decision process.
They did point out that an unintentional delay may have benefited us, I think, because the, the regulations have changed, which are more favorable now than they would have been maybe six months ago or seven months ago. So, sometimes it's okay to be late, because there's some unanticipated benefits.
It's kind of related to this area of kind of options and what you can now do that you couldn't necessarily do before, or with as much benefit.
And I think they did say that the canopy is more favorably regulated right now, because they're really looking at folks to expand in that area rather than rooftop, but that brings about other expenses because of snow plowing and stuff.
Incentive.
Incentive, yes.
In other words, you've got the canopy, and you've got the rooftop, and you've got the ground mount, and I think canopy is the most highly incented. Is it rooftop that's second, or is it, I'm not sure whether rooftop was second, I have to look at the material, but I think it might have been. And then, and I think there's not, and there's nothing for ground mounts anymore, right?
And I think one of the reasons that they brought up about the ground mounts is the, how it's taking away from open space and conservation land, especially around schools. And that's one of the reasons why the canopy option is becoming more incentivized, because they don't want communities to take away from the open space.
Right. And the canopies would mostly be over parking lots, am I right?
Precisely.
That's a nice space to not, you know, just to use and not affect open space.
They would only be in parking areas.
One question I had too, Anna, was that, because, you know, you're talking about the lease versus buy on it, did they do an ROI analysis on lease versus buy?
I thought they did, I thought there was some information there, but I think...
I have, I have looked, I'm just curious.
In the big booklet that they provided on our way out.
Yeah.
Maybe not on the few papers that we received while we were there, but I think they came in really suggesting that it be the lease option.
Strongly suggesting because of the, that tax credit component, which doesn't exist, you know, where you don't pay taxes.
And I, if I do, I would like to get a, I'm just wondering what their assumptions are, just, I'd be very curious to see how they put that together.
Did you get a sec when you went down? You didn't go?
You know something? I haven't, I mean, I haven't...
I felt your presence even though you weren't there.
I haven't spent that much time on it. I think right now, I'd like to, I'd like to look and see what they assume there. Because it is, it is, it is important to...
Well, yeah, I agree too, on that front, because of the, you know, if you're looking at like a 20-year period, you know, one thing is, what's the best case, what's the worst case, right? Because if it is, you know, changing, if the value of, you know, producing electricity or getting credited, or putting it back on the grid, or whatever's being considered is something that shifts over time, that could change the numbers a lot.
Right, but whatever, whatever they did for that ROI has to have a base assumptions over the next 20 years, what they think is going to happen.
Right, but predicting the future has certain drawbacks, so...
Not that we would know any better than them, but at least you could see the risk in it, right?
And they were pretty clear that leasing option was the way to go, because they said it's very unusual for a municipality to own their own system.
Right.
Yeah, front costs are very significant.
Yeah.
That was discussed a lot. Without maybe necessarily the returns on the other end.
Makes sense.
Yeah, I think the main thing I'd be concerned is, is just risk. I agree that you don't want to, you probably don't want to own it, but I'm just wondering, what, what is that risk?
They talked a lot about that, I think.
The risk of owning?
Well, the risk of, the risk of the whole deal.
Well, if I remember right, they said it all depends on how you write the contract. I mean, there was a lot of questions about roof maintenance. They said, well, usually you write something in where, you know, one time during the life of the contract, you take them off to do maintenance or repair or replace the roof, whatever you want to do. So, there's things like that you have to do to protect yourself, basically. And that, I assume, is what they're going to help us with.
And what happens at the end of the 20 years? Do they, we can either continue, they give us new panels with a new lease, or that kind of thing? Because I just, I mean, if you look into, you know, 20-year lease for solar for your home, you know, likelihood of you dealing with that in 20 years, possibly, but maybe not, but I feel like that's very short-term in a way for the district.
Is it leased, is it leased to own, or is it, you know?
Probably the technology will get way better, and we'll want to be rid of it by then.
Yeah.
We hope a hurricane is coming in the meantime, get rid of it for you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It did seem a lot, did seem to come down to how you write the lease, that was brought up a number of times.
And clearly, you can look at the financial analysis over 20 years, but when you're looking at ROI, you know, if the ROI isn't for 20 years, it's not going to be compelling to anyone, you know? Because for the most part, if you can't find something as a municipality or a school better to do with your money than something that pays back in 20 years, is, it's, you know, I think it's very likely that you always would find, you know, some better return on, on your investment, especially where you don't have unlimited dollars to invest.
So, any other discussion in regards to the solar feasibility update? Questions, comments, concerns from committee members?
When you mentioned cost for consulting, you meant the cost for Phase Two. So, if this project, if we decide the feasibility's not there, how much are we out?
So, Phase One was per district cost. They divided the Phase One expenditures by district, and I, for what we received, I think it was a minimal exploratory cost, I think it was $2,000 for Phase One. And we don't know what Phase Two is. We're waiting, they're waiting for our response, when the subcommittee meets, and then they'll calculate that out. So, because they're dealing with five different entities on this project, each of the three committees in the two towns, there was lengthy conversation with the town managers as to how we would move forward without having collaborative paralysis, right? Because we are our own unique entities, and, and make our own financial decisions as such. And so, Ty and Bond agreed to treat us equally, or as such, through the billing process, as opposed to build the town and then, you know, pass through the schools, or however else it could have been. So, each committee has its own autonomy, in terms of deciding whether they want to move forward with Phase Two.
Yes.
And then, we will be billed individually, by district, as we were for Phase One, and the towns were billed separately. So, we, we retain our autonomy, not only financially, but in terms of what we decide to do. So, if Southborough decided to move forward, or Northborough decided to move forward, or Regional decided to move forward, and other, the others did not, they would not be held back from moving forward into Phase Two, and would be billed appropriately based on the number of sites that might be considered under that process. I think it was really the most fiscally favorable, responsible and fiscally responsible way to move forward, given the complexity. And there was a lot of conversation about, what do we do since we're five different entities? Ty and Bond worked with us around that.
So, we'll be looking at those details as, as we get them?
And certainly, I, I feel an obligation to Northborough, to the Northborough schools as the utilities do come out of our budget. And so, I'm cognizant of the money that we could be saving, you know, potentially saving, a cost savings to our district. And I'd like to see those cost savings, but I want to be respectful to the, the other groups, you know, Southborough and the Region and the two towns, and if we can work cooperatively, I welcome that. But at the same time, I'd like to see cost savings for, for the Northborough Public Schools.
They did say there is significant benefit for us to move forward together to the extent possible. We're far more attractive to anyone who's going to respond to the RFP, because they're bringing in their resources and they're, you know, being able to maximize them by visiting, you know, two communities. And so, that was the premise behind the collaboration with the town as well, not only to explore the feasibility of going green and benefiting financially from that, but it's very rare that a school, that a school district gets to sort of create revenue. And so, this is an opportunity that not only, I think, presents well to the students that we're exploring options, we're exploring options that allow us to use what's available to us and be environmentally conscious, but also to determine whether there's some significant cost benefit for us to offset the budgets.
And maybe just to add to that, and while they did say, the superintendent just said that there's an overall benefit to being in combination, you know, for the next phase, it's, would be very unlikely that it would be the same benefit, because every entity is different, if not just from a physical configuration standpoint, you know, some, some buildings and some locations are just more conducive to very efficient use of solar. But nonetheless, by combining, everyone should receive some benefit.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Do I hear a motion from Northborough to adjourn?
Oh, all motion to adjourn.
Again.
Southborough? Will you adjourn? Say anything?
If you want a big vote, all in favor? Okay. Thank you, everyone.